This is Tuesday, April 5th. This is a work session of the Portland City Council related to the spring bump. Under Portland City Code and the state law, the city council is holding this meeting electronically. All members of the council are attending remotely by phone. And the city's made several avenues available for the public to listen to the audio broadcast of this meeting. The council is taking these steps as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and the need to limit in-person contact and promote social distancing. The pandemic is an emergency that threatens the public health, safety, and welfare, which requires us to meet remotely by electronic communications. Thank you all for your continued patience, flexibility, and understanding as we manage through this challenging situation to do the city's business. Today, of course, we'll be discussing my proposed spring supplemental budget. Due to the unprecedented emergency brought about by the COVID-19 virus, I issued guidance to delay the spring budget monitoring process, otherwise known as the bump, by several weeks and streamline the requirements to focus on some of the following adjustments. Technical true-ups, required compensation set-aside allocations to end the year on balance, program carryovers that either one, assistance supporting the current mayoral and city council priority packages for fiscal year 2021, or two, ensure the continuity of core services and operations throughout fiscal year 2021, or three, contribute to the city's fund to address urgent emergency response needs. I also advised that no new requests for general fund resources would be entertained except for requests for resources required to continue core existing operations through the remainder of fiscal year 2019-20. As you know, the city economists provided a forecast update on April 21st that anticipates a decrease of $75 million in our forecasted discretionary resources next year. Maximizing current year under spending is a critical component of my balancing strategy to meet this sudden decline while doing our best to preserve jobs and services. To this end, what you will see today are decisions I've made in my proposed bump ordinance to maximize the amount of resources available to fund next year's budget gap while still maintaining critical city services to make progress on core city goals and commitments. I'll now turn this over to Jessica Kennard, our city budget director, to walk us through the details of my proposed bump. We'll be voting on the supplemental budget ordinance next Wednesday, May 13th. Jessica Kennard, Director Kennard, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor, and good morning, members of council and colleagues. I will be sharing my screen with you here. And it's amazing that I've been doing this a number of times and it still takes me. So please bear with me. There we go. So as the mayor mentioned, my name is Jessica Kennard. For the record, I'm the city budget director. I'm here with Jane Marie Ford, our principal financial and policy analyst, who is also our supplemental budget coordinator. We will be walking through the mayor's proposed supplemental budget. While things have changed substantially in all of our lives, you might find some comfort in the fact that at least the budget work session for the spring bump has remained somewhat the same in terms of our agenda. So today's agenda is similar to what we would go through in another situation. We will provide an overview of the bump process. We will provide the detailed requests and changes in the mayor's proposed for general fund decision packages. We will provide an overview of notable non-general fund changes. We will go over briefly, there are very few, but we will talk about the two position authority changes that are included in the bump. And then we'll end with a contingency review of our general fund accounts. So the spring bump process, as you all know, is the second out of three budget monitoring processes that we complete each year. Its purpose is primarily to provide year-end financial projections, make current year budget adjustments, and true-up budgets and costs between fiscal years. The types of changes that we entertain during the spring bump are the true-up of beginning fund balance based upon the comprehensive annual financial report, inter-agency adjustments. We entertain program carryovers, putting money from one budget into the next year's budget, compensation set-aside allocation. So these are requests for funding that we put aside in a central contingency account throughout the course of the year to support general fund COLA and healthcare benefits. And I will talk a little bit more about those later when we review those requests. We entertain allocation of contingency resources for non-general fund bureaus. It's very typical during this time of year for them to take, make adjustments to their contingency, their deposit into their contingency, or take money out of contingency to true-up their anticipated expenditures for the end of the fiscal year. We also typically entertain some level of general fund requests for contingency for urgent and unforeseen needs. And then we entertain other technical adjustments. So updated spring guidance, as the mayor mentioned, because of the COVID-19 crisis, this bump is a little bit different than the past spring bumps. We will only be looking at new requests for general fund that are, were deemed as required to address continuity of current year operations. And then the carryover requests that were submitted should assistance supporting the current mayor and council priority packages, or ensure the continuity of core services and operations through the end of the fiscal year, or contribute to the city's fund to address urgent emergency response needs. So before I walk through the general fund changes, which I will do in a second, I want to emphasize that this is a typical work session. We can pause at any time for questions. And we also have time at the end for additional questions. Because this is on Zoom, a number of my staff are available to answer questions to the best of their ability about particular packages. We will also be taking any questions that we are unable to answer at this time and provide follow-up for you at a, in a close, in a close time, because you will have to vote on this next week. All right. So I am going to stop sharing this document and share with you instead our general fund handout. So this document walks through all of the changes that were requested and what has been included in the mayor's proposed in relation to the general fund. So let's see here, I'm going to scroll, I think I'm scrolled down here, I'm going to scroll up to the top. Can you all see that? Give me a nod. Okay, great. So what we'll start with is a compensation set-aside. And so for the general funds, for general fund-supported bureaus, every year, we set aside in a central contingency account, funding to support the cost of living increase and certain health cost increases for each general fund-supported bureau. And the reason why we provide that, we put that in a central contingency account is for two reasons. One is because that information often comes too late for us to incorporate that into individual bureau budgets. And so what we do is we put it for the first year in a central contingency account, and then the next year, we load it into the base bureau budget. And secondly, we put it in a central contingency account because the resources often aren't needed by all bureaus. If a bureau isn't fully staffed throughout the course of the year, they won't require these resources. But, but sometimes bureaus are, and they do require them. And so oftentimes, we have at least a handful of requests in the spring, which are required to, to fully fund the personnel expenses in that bureau and meet the, their end-of-year expenditures. So what you see this year is we received four requests for general fund compensation set-aside. I should say that we started this, we started the year with a total balance of compensation set-aside of 13.5 million dollars. And so you'll see here that the request total, 8.3 million. Portland Fire and Rescue requested 3.5 million dollars. This is in relation to the retroactive COLA that has been bargained as part of the tentative agreement with Portland Firefighters Association. And I believe you all will be considering that agreement and voting on it, I believe, next week. So this is the resource that would be required to be in compliance with that tentatively agreed bargaining agreement.
So excuse me, Jessica?
Yes.
I think the bulk of that cost is due to the change in vacation based on human resource changes that took place. So it is not because of the bargaining, but is because of human resource change in law.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. You are, I, I think you are right. So this, this number is actually quite, it's almost exactly the same number as the annual cost of that tentative agreement as well. But there, there are two different components. This is actually looking backwards towards the 1920 COLA that, that, once that agreement is ratified, we will need to pay for the 1920 COLA in addition to future-looking costs, which includes the vacation accrual cost. So this is actually in addition.
You're saying 1920, but you really mean 2020, right? Because...
No, this is, this is all for the current fiscal year. Yep, this is a retroactive COLA. So this is for...
For 2020. I'm sorry, you were saying 1920, and I just wanted to say that we're a century older than that. We're at 2020.
Yes. No, I'm sorry, I speak in fiscal years. So I, yes, fiscal year 2019-2020, which is, sounds like 1920, which, yes. Even though we are in a pandemic, we are, we are in a different century. Yes. Um, so, yes, thank you, Commissioner. So the Office of Equity and Human Rights is also requesting compensation set-aside this year. They typically do not request compensation set-aside. This year, their personnel expenses were a lot higher than what they've been in the past due to a variety of reasons. Be, one of which is changes in the classification and compensation structure, increased merit awards, and also folks, some turnover in the bureau that led to some people being brought in that were getting paid at a higher level than what previous employees had been brought in. So, so all of that results in their request for $55,000, which was their allocated amount of compensation set-aside. Then you have the Portland Parks and Recreation. They are requesting the entirety of the compensation set-aside that would be allocated to them to cover their current year personnel cost increases, also related to COLA and health benefits for permanent employees, and also minimum wage increases for their seasonal and casual workforce. And then you have the Police Bureau, which is requesting $3 million, which is actually less than their, than their annual allocation, but it is what is required to end the year on balance. They do have a number of vacancy savings, but you'll recall, council reduced their budget in the current year by, I think, about $2 million to account for some of that vacancy savings. And then the remainder of the vacancy savings has been used to offset costs associated with overtime and premiums and payouts. And so this is the amount that would be required to end the year on balance. So you'll see...
Jessica, why is that number, it's such a round number? Why, the others, like the, the others are very precise. Why is that just around 3 million?
That's an excellent question, Commissioner. I am wondering if Katie Scheifli, if you are on the call, if you have any information about the specific number in their request.
Yeah, sure. I mean, the short answer is that's, that's the number that the bureau requested. So I think they put together kind of a nice round number. And in looking at their, their year-end projections, CBO's year-end projections were about 2.6 million over budget for personal services, and theirs were a little higher, I think 3.2 million, if I'm remembering correctly. So I think they were just kind of trying to find like a nice round number to, to request.
Okay, thank you.
And I think, I mean, the reason why it's, I think the other two numbers that, from Fire and Rescue and Parks and Recreation are, are quite specific. The Parks and Recreation Bureau is requesting their exact allocation that would have been allocated to them, which was a specific dollar amount. And then Portland Fire and Rescue is requesting the exact amount that would have been part of the, I believe, part of the tentative agreement.
Thank you.
All right. So moving along to new general fund requests. So you'll see that there aren't very many of these this year, and I think that is in response to the mayor's updated guidance. The first item is, so there's a total of 2.3 million dollars in requests, 1.4 million is included in the mayor's proposed supplemental budget. The first one is for, it's for resources associated with liquidated damages from, actually from last fiscal year, from 2018-19, that procurement services did not request, that failed to request in the fall bump. Since these weren't requested in the fall, this money has fallen to balance and it needs to come forward as a new request. Given the current financial crisis, the bureau has been directed to absorb the cost of the required grants to organizations supporting the workforce training and hiring program. So that is not included in the mayor's proposal, and the bureau has been directed to absorb this cost. The second one is in relation to the Clean Air Construction Grants for, for the Organ Certifications Office, for the Business Inclusion and Diversity Certified firms. Trying not to say that word because it's so, it's so similar to COVID, CO-BID, but we're, so we're using the Business Inclusion for Diversity Certified firms. So for Clean Air Compliance, this is related to this new program that the city of Portland's been working on with regional partners to, to have increased regulation and compliance with, with Clean Air Construction standards. And so the thinking is that, and the request is for funding to provide grants to, to these businesses to help them meet compliance, be in compliance with these new regulations. However, the regional work group has discussed the potential to delay some of the compliance timelines. And so the bureau may request these resources again in the future. And so if, if it remains a priority and if funding is available, but as of right now, it looks like the, the compliance timelines will be delayed. Then the next request...
If I could just put in one more comment on that. We would also have the opportunity in the fall, if it's necessary, to fund that program. But, but right now, we are, so we're confident that at some point we will fund it. We don't believe we need it now. If it turns out we do, we have other opportunities to fund it later.
Thank you, Mayor. So the next item is a $600,000 request for the Homelessness and Urban Camping Impact Reduction Program to cover a projected program budget deficit caused by increased demand for services. However, rather than new resources, the mayor's proposed has the gap being covered by reallocating some funding that was set aside in the current year for a mobile hygiene pilot program. It's worth noting that we have, through the COVID-19 crisis, been providing resources for other types of hygiene activities out in the community. And so some of that resource is being diverted to help fund this activity in the, in the current year.
So does that mean the program will be delayed, or it will be, what? Funded with other resources, is what you said, Jessica?
Yeah, I think we're, we are looking right now, because so much of the, so much of the, the work right now is, is in response to COVID-19. I think we're looking at the potential for federal resources to help support some of those activities going forward.
And that was going to be my next question. Thanks.
All right. The next item is a request from Portland Parks and Recreation for 1.4 million dollars. This funds the balance of a projected funding gap in Parks and Recreation. Although the bureau took steps, as we know, to limit spending and they closed their, their recreational facilities, they also did incur costs prior to the closures that were originally expected to be funded with fees. So this covers that funding gap that they were not able to cover by, by shutting down their facilities quickly. And this is, this is projected to be necessary to be able to end the year on balance. And so the mayor has included this funding request in his proposed budget. The next one is a request for, you'll recall, there was a presentation during our budget work sessions from the Peninsula One Drainage District as part of the Columbia River Levy System. This is, this is the base amount that is required to, to keep that drainage district solvent. And you'll, you'll recall that we, as the city of Portland, are the biggest property holders within that, that drainage district. And so a failure of that system directly and most significantly impacts us. So the mayor's proposed budget shows zero because this is being funded out of a policy set-aside related to the Columbia River Levy System. Council had set aside money to fund that system. And so this will be funded, but out of that set-aside, not through new resources.
Jessica, can we go back to Parks for just a minute?
Absolutely.
And what I see is that there was money set aside to help with the transition from Multnomah Arts Center and Community Music Center in the last budget request. And it looks like they just basically spent, spent the money however they wanted to spend the money, rather than actually investing and making those organizations become independent. And so I'm just concerned that we are just allowing this kind of sticking toothpaste into the Pox barrel without having a real conversation about, we know that there, that they have a budget deficit, they continue to have a budget deficit, but I haven't seen any plans about, what are we planning to do to make sure that we're not just continuing to just stick toothpaste into this dyke, that we're not actually doing some reorganizing and rethinking? And I haven't seen anything, it leads me to believe that we're doing anything different now than we did before the last budget.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. And so I will also say that, so I think you're referring to, there's, there's a few parks items that we're going to be discussing today. This is a request to fill a revenue gap created by the COVID-19 crisis. But you're right, it's, it's analogous to a challenge that, that the bureau has had for a number of years with regards to the recreational fees and, and the subsidization, the required subsidization of the, by the general fund, because those fees do not keep pace with, with our expenditure costs. There are additionally, further down, there are some, some carryover requests, and that's where we'll see the Multnomah Arts Center carryover request. I'm going to ask, so Jane Marie, if you can reach out to Claudio and Adina and notify them that the commissioner has these questions. We, we have a couple of bureau folks that we asked to be on standby. And so by the time we get to those items, hopefully we can have them on and they can, they can answer some of your questions more specifically. All right. And so the next item is, it's, it's a technical true-up actually for the Portland Five and Performance Art Venues. There was an error in their current appropriation level target in the current year. And so they've requested that to be corrected, and this reflects the correction of that, that CAL target, which has also been corrected in the future going forward. And so that is included in the mayor's, in the mayor's proposed budget. All right. Now we're moving into program carryovers. So you'll see, I'm going to scroll down here to the bottom there. There are a number, but there are typically, this is, this is, this is typical, there are actually typically more program carryover requests. We have about 7.4 million in requests. The mayor is funding and including about 5.9 million of those requests. And so we'll walk through each of them one by one. The first one is a carryover for the Attorney's Office for Necessary Technology Upgrades. They have been actually carrying over resources, sort of contributing on an annual basis to, to this project over the past few years. They've worked with a consultant over the last few years to develop its practice management software. There's a couple of different critical software projects that are part of this. They've made progress on two out of three. They have the third one getting ready for an RFP. And so the, this is included in the mayor's proposed to allow them to continue with this, the software replacement project, since they are sort of in the middle of, of the project. And this is the final phase. The next item is also related to the Clean Air Construction Regulation System. So you'll recall, in the current year, council approved resources for a compliance database for us to be able to ensure compliance with the new regulation standards. There was also a budget note that required that the procurement come forward with a commitment from our regional partners before they could, before they could spend these funds. And so they reached that agreement a few months ago, but they weren't able to spend the funds, and they didn't get the green light to spend the funds until after that agreement was, was solidified. And so they haven't yet spent the funds, but they have, they are, they have worked on the requirements for the system. So they're asking to retain these resources so that they can now move forward with, with creating this compliance database. And that is included in the mayor's proposed. Let's see. Okay. So the Bureau of Human Resources is requesting to use underspending from their executive recruitment program for a consultant to review classification and compensation structure and create a starting pay calculator to replace the manual process. This is not being funded currently in the mayor's, in the mayor's budget, but we do know this is a critical issue. And so we're thinking and talking about ways for, to ensure that this work moves forward. All right. The next one is Procurement, PCDP CoEFS. So this is the Prime Contractor Development Program and Community Opportunities Enhancement Program. This is a carryover of $200,000. The bureau is actually looking for efficiencies, and this package represents the, the elimination of one position. And so what this will do, it takes the program from, it consolidates essentially two positions that we're running, working on these two different programs, consolidates it into one position and, and which will lessen the administrative costs associated with this program. And so they're asking for carryover of $200,000 to continue the work that has started on this, on this project. But it does represent an efficiency because they are consolidating the administrative support from these two programs into one. And so this is included in the mayor's, the mayor's proposed. The next item is a carryover from the Integrated Tax System, ITS, project within the Revenue Bureau. This is a very large and, and critical project to replace our revenue collection system. The bureau is, has, is working steadily through the, the project. They are on time and they are expecting to, so I'm looking at my notes here, they are expecting to go live in August of this year and expect completion in June of 2021. So this, this just reflects the continuation of that project. They're asking for the carryover of these resources to continue working on this project. The next item, the $565,000 request, is actually a request from, it's, it's underspending within the Revenue Division. What they're asking for is they're asking for this funding to be carried over to buy down debt service for this project. And what that would mean is you would spend this $565,000 and you would gain about $68,000 in ongoing resources on an annual basis because you're buying down the future debt service. So you'll see that this is actually included in the mayor's proposed, but the mayor has actually decided, instead of buying down the, the ongoing debt service, which is, which is, you know, best practice in good financial times, that the value of that resource is, is so important right now that we're actually taking that underspending. And you will see that as, as part of the mayor's proposed this Thursday, as helping to buy down the funding gap. So even though that's reflected as a carryover here, it's not being used, as the bureau has requested it, it is being used to solve for our funding gap because it is underspending. That's that $565,000.
And Jessica, is this the, will this cost go down, assuming that Multnomah County will also be paid into this new system?
Um, I believe that we reached an agreement with Multnomah County on the cost recovery for ITS generally. Katie, do you happen to know the details of that, of that agreement?
Yeah, this is Katie Scheifli. I, I'm not aware of the exact dollar amount, but I do know that Thomas Lanham and the Revenue Division have come to agreement about the county paying for their share. It is also true that, should we take on more tax collection efforts on behalf of other jurisdictions, like as they come up, that ongoing cost to the city will also go down because it's a proportional payment.
And will that agreement cover the full cost of us processing the county's tax
I am not, we will get that information to you, Commissioner. I am not sure about that. I think that the, 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 the critical point of disagreement has been whether the county needs to pay full cost recovery, which is the full cost of, of the work versus a marginal cost, because presumably the city would be doing this work anyways. So do they need to be covering the full cost of what, you know, it costs to, to do their work versus the marginal cost of just what it costs to do the extra work for them? So I'm, I'm not sure where we landed on that disagreement, and I will follow up with Thomas and get back to you.
Because I would ask the question, what happens if we just don't collect their tax?
Then they would have to do it themselves. All right. So, um, the next item is a $200,000 request for carryover for Procurement Services, which is related to the disparity study. So the, the last disparity study that we conducted was in 2009. And so we are needing to, to update that. And the Procurement Services has identified and carried over underspending, I believe, for a little bit, for a year or two, to, to be able to put forward, I'm sorry, put this toward the disparity study, and they anticipate doing this in the next year. So this is included in the mayor's proposed budget. Okay. The next item is for the 311 program. They're requesting to carry over underspending primarily due to hiring delays. The program does have ongoing resources and is fully funded in the next year's budget. These resources would expedite the program implementation, but given the current COVID-19 crisis, those... those, that, that request is not included in the Mayor's proposed. The next item is from, again, from the Office of Community and Civic Life. They're requesting to carry over underspending from their personnel budget to put toward a, a technology solution for the Bureau that includes online payments, applications and renewals for various programs, including Cannabis Licensing Program, the Noise and Liquor Permitting Program. The Bureau has already allocated $400,000 in its base budget for the fiscal year 2021. And again, given limited general fund resources, this has not been included in the Mayor's proposed bump. The Office of Community and Civic Life is also requesting to carry over underspending to put towards a new pilot for a community engagement online platform. This is the $19,500 request. Again, given limited general fund resources, this is not included in the Mayor's proposed bump. And finally, the Office is requesting, has identified underspending that it would like to reallocate towards proposals that support those not served by other COVID-19 relief efforts. So this includes $200,000 for Equity Corps. You'll recall that Equity Corps put forward a request through special appropriations.
Commissioner Udaley have a question, possibly on prior issue?
Yes.
I'm disappointed to see that funding for Citizen Lab wasn't included because this is not only something that we needed before COVID, but something that we need now more than ever. So it's a very small ask and I'll be pursuing other options, I guess.
Commissioner Udaley, that, that was more of a balancing act. And if, if this is a program that you feel strongly about, then obviously we can entertain a, an amendment in the package. So we, we can talk about that later. Because you're, you're right, it's, you know, it's a small, it's small.
Okay. All right, so the $455,000 request includes $200,000 for Equity Corps for universal representation of undocumented Portlanders, $250,000 for the Oregon Workers Relief Fund, and $5,000 for the Street Roots Vendor Assistance Fund. So this, this request has been included in the Mayor's proposed. It is not going towards current, current allocations or appropriations, but given the COVID-19 emergency and given what seems to be potentially the, the lack of federal support for these individuals, this has been included in the Mayor's proposed budget to serve those, the needs of those individuals.
And so I, I see Dr. Smith has a question, as do I. I'll let Dr. Smith go first and then I'll ask my question.
Thank you, Commissioner. So Jessica, I was wondering if there was more information about what the Street Roots Vendor Assistance Program, what the distribution looked like? So I'm definitely in support of this moving forward. I just, there was a little bit more detail around the other two. And so I was just wondering what that particular part of this looked like?
Yeah, let me see if, if Kia Cannon is on the line. She can speak to that a little bit more. It's $5,000, so it's, it's a pretty small dollar amount. But Kia, can you, can you speak a little bit more to what, what specifically that's going towards?
Sure. So this is Kia Cannon, City Budget Office, for the record. The $5,000 is, is specific for the, the individuals who were either experiencing low income or poverty levels pre-COVID-19, who had been participating in the sale of the Street Roots newspaper to passersby. Given that that transaction can no longer occur, this request serves as an unemployment-like benefit for these particular individuals. Not all of them experience houselessness, but a large majority of those folks do. As far as your specific question around distribution, I do not have the specifics. We can certainly reach out and get back to you if there's a more specific question around like process, if that's what you're interested in, or the type of individual.
No, I think you answered it. That was, I'm just wondering, like, the unemployment benefit piece was what was missing for me? And I might have missed that in the reading, so thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
And Jessica, my question has more to do around, I guess I'm concerned that we have Prosper Portland putting funds into similar pots. We have Housing putting funds into similar pots of resources. I'm concerned that we have every Bureau at the city thinking that they're going, doing a COVID response without us doing any coordination about whether or not we are duplicating or duplicating resources to a very small group of folks. And so I'm not, I don't know that, that this would be something that I would be able to support just simply because I know of all the other city efforts that are putting money into similar pots. Unless we have one COVID-19 response chart that actually shows what the city's response has been from various bureaus. I, I, it just feels like we're just kind of, everybody's doing their own thing. And as a city, we are not having a coordinated COVID-19 response. And I can't support something that just looks willy-nilly.
Thank you, Commissioner, for that. I know that, I, I believe that the Mayor's Office has been working on scheduling a follow-up conversation around the $114 million Treasury Funds, now that we know what we can use those for and we're collecting information from bureaus. And it sounds like maybe this should be part of that conversation with Council as you talk about your overall allocation of resources and priorities.
That's exactly what I'm thinking. Otherwise, we'll have all the individual bureaus making their own independent decisions about how they're supporting COVID, and that doesn't appear to me like a coordinated approach.
So let, let me chime in here. So both strategies are correct. First of all, there has been an opportunistic approach immediately in the near term to get support out into the community. We did that quickly with a million dollars towards the homeowner stabilization, or the Housing Stabilization Fund. We certainly did it when we allocated dollars, a million dollars towards small business relief and then Prosper matched that using unallocated resources within the Bureau. So we're, we're balancing two different things. Our work session on the 114 million isn't till late May. And those vendors, for example, are already unemployed. They are already not receiving their benefits. So my administration has been trying to balance both the urgency with the opportunistic plays that exist within the bureaus to get resources into the community immediately. But Commissioner, I also agree with you that going forward on the recovery phase, and that's part of what the, the CARE Act dollars are for, we have that luxury of more time, more thoughtfulness, a little more time to think strategically about how to allocate those resources. And that's the spirit in which I called for a work session in late, late May on those issues.
If there are no other questions on that one, I will move on to the Portland Parks and Recreation Request for a General Fund Program Carryover. There are several requests within this $845,000 request. It includes funding for the first two years of a Sustainable Future Position, which will develop a funding plan that would set the Bureau on the path to fiscal sustainability. The request also includes carryover for projects previously authorized by the Council, which includes the Multnomah Arts, funding for the Multnomah Arts Center and Community Music Center Transition and the Interstate Firehouse Cultural Center. These are all included in the proposed bump. Funding is not included for, for Wi-Fi and, I'm sorry, Wi-Fi for zone maintenance facilities and additional unspent funds related to several prior year financial planning projects. So this is the one that Commissioner Hardesty, I believe, had a question on. And I, I think we do have Director Adina Long and, and her Finance Manager Claudio Campasano on the line. So I believe that they can, they can speak to your questions, Commissioner.
Thank you, Jessica. Adina, are you there?
Actually, I've got Claudio Campasano, Finance Property and Technology Manager of Parks, is available to answer any questions.
Excellent. Well, I mean, my question is really around the work that's happened since the last budget to move us towards both independence for these two centers, the Multnomah Arts Center and the Community Music Center. And it's based on what I'm, what I'm being told, we're basically just carrying over the money because we didn't do it. And instead, we just kind of kept expenses as per normal. Can you tell me like where we are in that process and why the Council should be supporting carrying this money over again?
Absolutely, that's a great question. So maybe just giving a little context on, you know, where we've been on all of the transitions that were, that were in the budget for this fiscal year, fiscal year 2019, 2020. We had, you know, we, since the budget was implemented, we have transitioned several of our facilities to nonprofit operators, including Hillside, Fulton and Selwood Community Centers. So those were our priorities early on because we knew that we needed to, we needed to close those and not have the expenses continue. However, we had essentially 18 months of runway for a Community Music Center and the Multnomah Arts Center. So essentially, we, you know, Council agreed that those are pretty, pretty challenging, challenging assets to transition. We are not looking to move those to a private operator. We're looking to, to move them to a more sustainable path that includes additional fundraising, additional cost recovery, utilizing, you know, utilizing the assets more completely. Multnomah Arts Center, for example, is an incredible property. So considerably more, considerable more complexity than just finding a tenant. And so we, we secured a project manager for that in December and started to put together, so that was five months into the fiscal year. And also just to provide a little more context, it wasn't just those centers that we were transitioning. There was also probably the most significant reductions and transition needs were in, in our community centers. So they, they underwent a complete revamp of our, of our service delivery model and our staffing model. So a, a real big change for all of those. And that was developed throughout the summer and implemented after summer programming. So that was really another one of our highest priorities in terms of transition. And I, and I got to say that up until COVID hit, we actually were seeing, we're seeing really good, a lot of good news in our budget. We were actually tracking to underspend and do, you know, land the plane and, and get through, you know, really execute on a lot of these transitions. So recognizing that MAC and CMC were really going to be the most, the most challenging, Council agreed to fund those through this fiscal year and then an additional six months of next year. And they also, you also agreed to fund a, a project manager. We are, you know, we have an internal project manager that's been dedicated to the project now since December. And this is, this is what they are working on. So we're going to fund that position internally. And so the project management funds would then extend the runway for the next, the last six months of the fiscal year so that we can continue to operate and continue to manage that transition, which is considerably, you know, considerably more challenging. And frankly, in its early stages, I think you're right, that it's slower than the others. But we've had a lot on our plate and had a lot of successes in terms of, in terms of the transitions that, that we have executed on. So, so really looking to carry over the funding that is in the current year's budget in order to extend the runway and make sure that we can, we can do that work thoughtfully and completely.
And so what's the anticipated, you said this was an 18-month project. And so where are you in that projection as far as having this concluded?
Right, so we, so like I said, we were only able to identify the right project manager in December. Work had begun right after the holidays in earnest to develop, to develop a, a, a complete understanding of current state and to start exploring potential future states for those, for those assets. I can't give you, you know, I would need to, to reach out to staff to get complete details on exactly where that project is right now. But I know that folks are reasonably confident that, that we can achieve the goal of, of no general fund support or to reduce general fund support that's targeted by the end of next, this coming fiscal year 2021. We would be happy to brief, brief Counsel or your office on, on the details. And I'll reach out to staff if that's something you'd like.
I would certainly like that because I, I don't understand how you suffered a $1.4 million loss due to COVID. And so I would certainly like to have additional information about that as well as about the 771,000 in fleet. Are all those vehicles necessary, again, knowing what we know today? So
I'm, I'm happy to set up a, a separate briefing, but also happy to respond to those right now if, if you'd like. The one point
Totally up to Jessica. Do we have time to actually get those questions answered now? Or I'm happy to do it offline.
We, we do have time. The, the remaining items that I have to walk through, I anticipate walking through with more than enough time left in our work session. We have a couple of hours set aside. I didn't think we needed all of the time.
Claudio, I, I would like Claudio to answer the question particularly about the 1.4 because as a bearing on the budget, I'm going to release later this week. So it's probably good to get the information out there.
Yeah, no, so I appreciate that. So the $1.4 million is really unrelated to all of the transitions and, and really is associated with impacts related to COVID. You know, we started communicating early and often with the Mayor's Office when we started seeing this and anticipated closing our indoor recreation facilities as, you know, as came up in the budget process last year. Offering our services, it's a, we do it with a blend of general fund and, and revenues. So essentially, our services cost more than we bring in, in revenue. So when we shut down, you know, when, when we shut down our services and laid off 752 staff, we saved probably a little under $3 million through the, through the rest of the fiscal year. But we also lost about $4.1 million in revenue. So in addition to just on the recreation side, we've also, we also make considerable resource through the permitting of our parks. So we've got a lot of special events and picnics and weddings, et cetera. And so all of that, we had to cancel and refund. And so, so the $1.4 million is actually less than the sum of all of those revenue losses. And that's largely because as part of, as part of the budget process last year, Council was, you know, recognized that all of the transitions that we were about to undertake were really, you know, potentially pretty risky. And we had, you know, we had done a lot of homework to try and figure out exactly what it would take and what we could get to. But there was, there was some level of uncertainty. And so Council did approve several reasonable, reasonably sized contingencies, which we were not utilizing as the year was going on. So that was going to be reflected in our underspending. But then what it ended up doing is actually mitigating some of those revenue impacts. So, so that $1.4 million is actually, it's, it's that difference between the revenue that we were generating and the savings that we generated by, by, by laying off staff. So it really not associated with the transitions at all, but
So is that the difference between what you would have made and the staff you laid off is a $1.4 million difference? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
And so, and you had a question about fleet vehicles. I would say that, yes, as long as, you know, you know, we could, we could get down into the details. I know that at least half of the amount that we requested is associated with two pieces of heavy equipment in our urban forestry group. They, they've been on order for over a year. Or we've been working with City Fleet to spec them and get them on order for over a year. They're, they're pretty, pretty specific pieces of equipment and they're necessary for emergency response in urban forestry to remove trees from the right of way during storm events, et cetera. So, so I think that, you know, and we can go through the rest of the list with your office if you'd like. But for the most part, when, you know, in, in the past, when we've gotten operations and maintenance funding through, you know, when we develop new parks, we ask State Council for, for the operations and maintenance funding for that. Usually we'll have some vacancy savings initially when, you know, when we bring on the people that would be taking care of those parks. And we utilize that vacancy savings to fund the vehicles that those positions will need in order to do their work and to, because we're obviously very dispersed, you know, dispersed organizations. So, so the vehicle purchases that we make typically are to provide vehicles so that the staff that are performing the work can actually get to job sites. So they, they, you know, we, like I said, we can get into the specifics of the vehicles, but that's generally about half is those urban forestry, heavy, a piece of heavy equipment and then mostly vehicles for staff to, you know, trucks for our, our carpenters or facilities, maintenance techs, et cetera.
And how are you thinking differently since COVID-19?
You know, we've had to think differently. We've, you know, I, I, I would actually look to our operations folks to, to give a clearer picture. But I can definitely say that as part of COVID-19, the response from Portland Parks and Recreation has been, you know, Parks and Recreation has been, you know, really sort of a frontline effort. You know, obviously, we needed to, to end our indoor programming, but, you know, we've, we focused both on the, you know, we've, we've supported the effort in terms of converting three of our community centers into shelters and working with the county on that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I meant more specifically to these vehicle purchases.
I, I. Oh, I mean, so at this point, you know, we are, you know, obviously, we are expecting, you know, we're expecting significant reductions as part of the near term. But at this point, we haven't identified, you know, we, we've already talked about, you know, extensively with council about how we are having trouble keeping up in terms of maintaining our existing infrastructure. So the vehicles that we're, that we're purchasing are really to provide the, the staff that we have currently to do the work, to take care of that infrastructure on a daily and ongoing and long-term basis. So I'd be happy to sort of work with, with CBO or the mayor's office, your office to identify any, any vehicles that might not be necessary. But, you know, but, but we would definitely want to do that planfully because, you know, right now, we have staff that are counting on these vehicles to execute on their roles.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And Mayor, I just wanted to say that, you know, carryover funds won't even be adopted until July 1st. So the likelihood of those being early funds out of the door before we have our May conversation about how we're going to use the federal dollars is nil.
Yeah, no, that's a great point.
Fair enough.
Thank you. That concludes my questions.
Thank you.
Great. So, so we spoke a little bit already about the next item, which was the fleet carryover from Portland Parks and Recreation, but you'll see that they requested $771,000. What is included in the mayor's proposed are the resources for those, those two aerial lifts, I believe that, that Claudio was referring to. And then there, there are a number of other vehicles that are sort of in the, in the pipeline and are being processed by our central fleet that are also included in that request. What are not included are items that CBO looked through and saw that, that some of the items that looked like were either duplicates or potentially could be encumbered in the, in the current year. So this is a lower amount that, that sort of reflects what is seen as the, the most necessary amount to carry over to support the fleet needs in the next fiscal year. The next item is also an item that represents several requests within one. You see, it's from the police bureau. It's $1.3 million of carryover request. It includes $834,000 in one-time resources, which were allocated to the body worn camera program. The mayor's proposed takes that $834,000 and is deappropriating it, but not carrying it over for that purpose, is carrying it over to help fund the funding gap in next year. So that, that $834,000 represents a carryover to fund the funding gap, not to fund the body worn camera program.
And Jessica, is that, don't we already have a compensation set aside? Didn't we have it at the top for police?
Yes. In addition, the police has requested funding to cover their personnel expenses throughout the end of the fiscal year. That's the $3 million to, to cover anticipated personnel expenses through the end of the fiscal year.
What do you mean, what do you mean personnel expenses?
That is to cover expected, so the compensation set aside is for anticipated fully loaded personnel costs with cost of living adjustments and health benefit costs. Bureaus that are fully staffed throughout the year or incur high overtime costs often require these resources to get through the end of the fiscal year. And it's money that we've planned on spending for those costs, but we hold it in a central contingency account because bureaus often don't need it. But, but typically, the police bureau, the fire bureau, and often the parks bureau request these funds.
I'm sorry, is this a duplicate from what we see at the top at the bottom? Or is it $3 million in one pot and $3 million in the other pot?
It's, it's, it happens to be a similar dollar amount in both situations. So the.
So there's $6 million total.
So this is a positive $3 million that will be added to the police bureau's budget. What we were talking about down here is a carryover request that is taking money out of the police bureau's budget. They requested money be taken out of their budget in the current year in order to be placed in next year's budget in totaling $1.3 million here. And so the request to take money out and put it to next year's budget was, a big portion of that was actually for money that was allocated in the current year for the body worn camera program. That is not going to be put in their budget next year. It's going to be taken, it's taken by the mayor as part of his proposed and, and helping to solve for the funding balance issue, funding gap issue.
Now, this is like as complicated as it sounds.
Yeah. Yes. And so also as part of that, and that's why there's, there's these brackets around everything that reflects, you know, money that's being actually taken out of the bureau's budget. The carryovers are all requests to, to deappropriate, to take money out of bureau's budget, mostly so that they can carry it over into next fiscal year's budget. But in certain cases where the, the process is extra complicated this year by the fact that the, the mayor is looking for any and all resources that, that can be taken in order to, to lessen the funding gap for next year.
And I guess I'm just trying to be clear. So there is a total of $6 million that's being requested to be set aside for police compensation, right? As one thing.
There is $3 million that is being requested for police compensation. There is, the other items for police is those carryover requests, which only, in the mayor's proposed, only includes that body worn camera money that is going to be going towards funding our funding gap. And then there is also an item that we will talk about in a moment related to the large, there's another $2 million deappropriation. But this is actually, again, taking money from the police bureau. They had intended on putting this $2 million towards the replacement of their region records management system. The mayor instead is taking that money to help fund the, the, the financial funding gap. So that money reflects money that is, that is going towards solving our, our funding gap, not towards police bureau activities.
Don't we also have ongoing body camera money that the police bureau gets as a regular, they've been getting for the last three or four budget cycles?
That's correct, Commissioner. They do have an allocation, an ongoing general fund allocation for the body worn camera program.
For how much?
Katie, I believe is it $1.7 million about? Is that right, Katie?
Yeah, the, the initial amount several years ago was in that 1.6, 1.7 amount with sort of like inflationary factors over the years. We've targeted that at about 1.8 million ongoing at this point.
And what's the plan with the 1.8 million ongoing for body worn cameras that we don't have?
So that will be considered as part of the mayor's annual proposed budget that he will be speaking to on Thursday.
Standby. Commissioner Udaley has a question as well.
I'll wait for this conversation to end. This is about the Civic Life spring bump request.
Are there any other questions on this police, oh, so the police bureau, what is not included? So what is included in the mayor's, in the, in the mayor's proposed is the money for the body worn camera program that will be used to solve for the funding gap. What's not included is a request to carry over $200,000 for Kelly building tenant improvements, $240,000 for electronics and security camera upgrades for the central precinct, and $50,000 for a training division elevator study. That is the police bureau item. I will pause now, Commissioner Udaley, if you would like to ask your question around Civic Life's budget.
Sure. Could you go back to the screen that shows Civic Life?
Sure. This is the, the request for carryover. So there's the technology upgrade, $100,000.
Yeah. Help me understand, there were many more submissions than are reflected there.
What this is referring to, the section that we're looking at right now, we have grouped things into the type of request. And so we're just looking at requests for carryover right now.
Yeah, thank you.
Carryover request.
Yeah, that, okay, that clears up that question. Very concerned about no carryover for 311. I would argue that, again, functioning 311 system is more important than ever. It's something that we should have had years ago and would definitely help in our response to community need around the COVID crisis.
Could I jump in on that? And Jessica, clarification there is probably warranted. I, I support the 311 system and its deployment. We believe these resources could be gone without, without impinging upon the rollout of the program. But Jessica, could you give a little more detail on that?
Yeah. So the, the program is fully funding and funded and actually has an increase in their allocation that council already approved for next year as part of a CAL target adjustment that they provided last fall. This is just an, an additional increase on top of the, the increase that's already built into their base budget. So they are intending on moving forward as planned even without this allocation. This would be an additional allocation to further expedite the work that has been planned.
Does that make sense, Commissioner Udaley? I was gonna follow up on that.
Kind of. I mean, I'll have more questions, but if you want to follow up on this particular one, go for it.
So what would have been enhanced if had we invested $183,000 into the 311 program?
I am going to ask Kia Cannon, our analyst who worked on this request in our office, to provide additional information if she has it. Kia, do you happen to know the specifics around the enhancement proposal?
Yes, yeah. So my understanding from the 311 program manager is that this underspending from 1920 being carried over to 2021 would allow them to add four FTE faster, so a year earlier than originally planned. That is all this money would do. The program is fully funded for fiscal year 2021. There are no planned reductions to that program at this time. This simply would help them onboard four FTE faster.
Thank you for that. So without this, what would the timeline be for adding staff?
It will maintain the, the annual implementation plan that was presented to council in November of 28, 2019. So all this does is, is mean that the program will add, I think, two FTE in the next fiscal year, and the remaining FTE will roll out on an annual basis as part of the five-year implementation plan.
Thank you. That was very helpful.
Then there's the carryover for the bureau-wide technology upgrade. The bureau has really been struggling with grossly outdated technology. I mean, I just want to add, we have been extremely resourceful. We scrubbed our budget. We're finding money to fund things that the city was going to fund through other means. And we're asking for carryover to upgrade incredibly outdated technology that is really hindering our ability to serve the public in general, but especially during this crisis. And it's going to serve multiple programs in the bureau. And the need is especially urgent for cannabis licensing. Again, it's, we, we were very thoughtful about what we, about our requests and really targeting needs that are urgent and will allow us to better serve the city during the ongoing shutdown.
Commissioner, can you use the cannabis revenue to fund the technology upgrade?
Instead of, no. I mean, we, cannabis is only one part of it. It's, this is also liquor, noise, advisory boards and commissions, neighborhood services, and communication. So we could only fund a portion of it with cannabis dollars.
But liquor and noise are also revenue producing. So does this reflect all general fund? Or why could it be modified to use some of the revenue from the, from the services that, that would be using the system as well?
Liquor and noise are both taking a hit revenue-wise. I would need someone, someone from the bureau to weigh in on your question.
Commissioner, if I, if I may, this is Kia, City Budget Office again. Civic Life has in their base budget for fiscal year 2021, they are funding 75% of a $500,000 estimated cost for this bureau's technology solution from cannabis business license revenue. Because those funds are restricted to being needed to only fund the proportional amount of which cannabis we use, that technology upgrade, that's why it cannot be fully funded from that particular pool of resources. Other funds are coming from a 5% allocation of EMS from noise, liquor, advisory boards and commissions, neighborhood outreach to, to fund 400,000 of the total need next year. So this $100,000 just closes that gap using bureau underspending from 1920.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that, I mean, I guess I'll just add, I share Commissioner Hardesty's desire for us to take kind of a citywide approach to how we, to our response to needs in the community during the crisis. However, in our ask for some, carryover for support for those not served by other efforts, we are funding a universal representation request that I believe was going to be otherwise funded through special appropriations that will no longer be funded. And I would argue strongly for at least that. Well, and Oregon Workers Relief Fund as well. I think those are the two biggest chunks and very legitimate needs. And I don't believe, I don't know that other bureaus are planning on funding those.
Commissioner Udaley, I do know that Prosper Portland is looking at the Workers Relief Fund and will be making recommendations as far as universal representation. Can't say for sure whether anybody else is funding that. But I, again, I do think that a more citywide approach rather than individual bureaus picking and choosing who they're going to give resources to would be a much better approach that we could be able to defend long-term.
Yeah, I generally agree, but I would like to point out that we are targeting communities that are not being served by current federal relief efforts. And in particular, universal defense, not only do our immigrant and refugee communities still face persecution by the federal government, if they live in a mixed-status household, they're not receiving aid that they're entitled, that their families are entitled to. So, and furthermore, detention centers are not safe places. And anything we can do to keep people out of those centers, I think we should be doing. Thank you. Thank you.
I am scrolling back down. So we just spoke about the Police Bureau carryover. The next item on the list is through the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability. This, this is a $100,000 request to continue supporting the age-friendly program. So council allocated $200,000 in one-time resources in the current year budget for this program. The bureau is requesting to carry over half of that funding due to delays in hiring. The Emergency Coordination Center has asked the program manager to manage the Aging and Disability Community Project related to the COVID-19 emergency. So this is also related to our emergency response for the COVID-19. And this is included in the mayor's proposed budget.
Jessica, was this originally a staff position that we funded in last year's budget?
It was a $200,000 request for, for a one-time program. It was related, I believe, originally to work that we had been doing with the Institute on Aging through Portland State University. Michelle Rubin in my office worked on this item with the bureau. Michelle, if you're on, can you provide additional information around the original request?
Let me just say, when a one-time-only funding request comes to the city council and then it turns into a position, all of a sudden, it's no longer a one-time funding opportunity. So what happened between the time that city council voted to do this one-time funding that all of a sudden now is a staff position?
Yeah, and I think, thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate that. The, I, I believe the original scope was, was to create sort of, it was a discrete project, a pilot project. So it was a position, but it was intended to be a limited-term position. But I'm going to ask Michelle to clarify around the original scope of the project. Michelle, can you, can you chime in here?
Hi, yes, Michelle Rubin. It was a one-time request for exactly what Jessica just said, for a kind of pilot, to create a framework of an age-friendly program for the city. And it was a limited, it's a limited time, a limited-term staff position. And that's what the original resources were intended for. There were just delays in hiring that limited-term staff.
And how long do we anticipate? So we asked for $200,000. Did we already spend $100,000 without hiring a staff person?
The staff person has been hired. It was just delayed in the hiring process. And yes, I believe $100,000 has been spent. And that includes both the staff costs and there are materials and services costs for this too. A lot of the, what the staff does is community engagement work with the community. And we do have, if you have additional questions, Commissioner, we have BPS on standby and we can let them into the meeting.
So I'm happy to have this conversation offline. I just want to, when I hear that we're funding something one time and then I hear we just hired staff, I anticipate you coming back again saying, now we want to make this permanent. And again, it's like, what is the goal of the program itself? And what did we commit that we would do? So I, I'm happy to have that conversation offline before we have this vote, because I want to know exactly what I'm voting for. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think, Michelle, if, if we can let them into the meeting, I think it would be prudent to have the commissioner's questions answered now since, since they will need to vote on this item next week. While we wait for them to arrive on the meeting, we'll go ahead and, and move on. And when they, when they arrive, just send me a chat and we can, we'll, we'll turn it back over to them. All right. So the, the next item is also related to the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability. They requested to carry over underspending that they experienced in the current year related to the Equity Manager position that they have in their budget. The bureau has reassigned two existing FTE to create an equity program within the bureau. And they'd also like to allocate these resources next year to support program creation. Due to limited general fund resources, these, this request is not being carried over in the proposed bump, but it will be allowed to fall to balance to support our funding gap. The next item is related.
Sorry, Jessica, I had a question or comment. So I know that part of, in the explanation of the narrative, there was just sort of a lack of clarity, it seemed like, around like what the funding would be used for. And so I do know that there was a mention of some work that was related to COVID, connected, right, to, to these dollar amounts. And so I wonder if there's a possibility that if we're able to gather a little bit more information and might reconsider this request, given, you know, the need as it relates to COVID and trying to do a better job of mobilizing our equity managers and equity work across the city. And so that would just kind of be my, my recommendation. And so I don't know if that's a possibility. If it's just a matter of needing more clarity about what the, what the funding would be used for, I think that maybe if they wanted to work with O E H R, we could, you know, possibly provide some guidance around that. There could be some reconsideration in that request.
Thanks, Dr. Smith. I was actually thinking the same thing. I was wondering if this has anything to do with the anti-displacement work that the bureau will be involved in next year. I also need some more details about this $146,000 and how it would support the vision that the city of Portland has moving forward post-COVID-19. So, and if somebody's online that can answer those questions now, I'm happy to hear it.
Jessica, could you clarify, are these new positions or these existing positions?
So the, the funding request is not for a position. It is for, it's underspending that they want to use in the next year to program to enhance this new equity program that the bureau is constructing. And the bureau has reallocated existing positions to fortify an equity program. So what they would like to do is use some underspending to, to also allow these reallocated staff to have some additional money to, to put towards efforts as they build out this new equity program within the bureau.
Okay. And, you know, I, I'm certainly open to further conversations about this. Part of the general framework I used in the bump was if the program doesn't exist yet, it was highly unlikely to get funded.
Right. That makes sense. That makes sense. And I, I agree. I would really love to know more about this program because I think investing in anti-displacement is going to be vital coming out of COVID-19. So if that's what this is about, I would be much more excited about making sure that we are funding, allowing those dollars to be carried over so that that work actually does not slow down once this budget's passed.
Great. We have Donnie Oliveira is also on the line. Donnie, what you got to share with us? And then Commissioner Hugh Daly, did you have a question also?
Good morning, everyone. This is Donnie Oliveira. I'm the deputy director at BPS. So I'll just start with the, the questions around the equity work. As Jessica explained, this is a carryforward from unspent salary that we had in this year's budget for the Equity Manager. And the intentionality behind this carryforward was that as we about to hire a new Equity Manager, ideally in a month, that this resource would be available for them to operationalize our equity program. We are very, taking our people very seriously. And the way that this would be applied bureau-wide is that we have a team now that's basically dedicated to ensuring new policies or program investments are done truly with an equity lens and applying the best tools available to us from an equity mindset and leading with frontline community, you know, collaboration. So this isn't really a new program per se. It's really just operationalizing some of the work that was already happening in the bureau, but just at a bureau-wide level. Speaking to the ability to respond to COVID-19 and anti-displacement and even our climate justice work, this team would directly support those teams in advancing some of the challenges that we're seeing in terms of the disparities that come across a lot of this work in our housing and our climate policy developments. So as a whole, what we're talking about here is how is BPS going forward with our equity work and operationalizing our equity plan in a way that's actually having results and a results-based sort of framework? And this resource would be very valuable to that. If you look at this past year, it's a lot of internal work, getting our teams aligned to what equity means. And this is, this is a resource to carry that work forward with the community going forward. That's the equity one forward.
So, Donnie, could you, could you go one sentence or two deeper on that? You know, those sound like laudable odd goals, but I'm not hearing specifically how you would use the $146,000.
Great question. So I'll just go to some of the specifics. And this won't be the, the comprehensive, of course, because we're also waiting for an Equity Manager to be on board to help guide this work. But we've put a lot of resources and investment in trainings internally. So one of the two staff is internally focused, staff person that's looking at recruitment, you know, diversity hiring, retention, professional development. So what sort of trainings and, and skill sets can we bring to the bureau internally? So all of our colleagues across the bureau are really thinking about and leading with equity. So there's that type of work. And it looks like sort of internal trainings, best practices. Some of the work that we've done at anti-displacement started with a cohort of people that were really diving deep into the housing disparities and that turned into anti-displacement work with our collaboration with community, but also some work internally that we've been doing in the past. I always talk about with the Residential Info Project, that displacement analysis that we did as a part of, of that, of that work was one of the first in the country. That's, that's pretty exciting. But we have much more to do, right? And some of this equity work would be, would come from that resource in terms of potential contracts, working with community. And that's the other thing, is a lot of this equity work requires community engagement and, and collaboration. And we don't want to be extractive. We don't want to keep asking community to participate, not actually resourcing them up so to, to do the work. So I'm, I'm seeing that a likelihood of some of this resource being available to community partnerships to ensure that they have resources to, to do this work with us. And then, of course, we have the Climate Emergency Declaration and Development. And that's just the, the next milestone in climate work. There are a lot of work to implement. And so I could easily see this equity resource being applied to both policy developments, ensuring that the, the next steps in terms of our, you know, decarbonization of our fuels and buildings has an equity lens. And what does that analysis look like? What are the pathways to really meaningful community benefits? We have ideas, but we'd like to see that on paper and data and, and feedback from community. Again, that's going to be a resource that's needed beyond just what the staff of BPS can provide. So again, a resource pool available to deliver that sort of policy development.
Donnie, I think it would be helpful if you could provide something, at least in writing to my office, that actually lays out how you see these funds being utilized. Because I have to say, based on what you said, that's a lot of bang for the buck. If you're going to get all that done with $146,000, then you're a high hero, right? So I think we have to be realistic about how far those funds will go and what the priority will be if those funds are actually included in the budget.
Thank you, Commissioner. I, I will also, you can definitely do that. And what I shared were snapshots of the work that we have that's ongoing, that needs this equity lens applied. The other thing, because I want to acknowledge that, you know, I'm just representing the staff of 100 at BPS that are, are very, very like engaged in this equity work. And one of the commitments that we've made as leadership at BPS is to ensure that all the equity, equity work we're doing is designed and developed with all of our staff, for our frontline teams that are out in the community, working to our, our finance team, our outreach teams, making sure everybody's on the same page about this. So we're still kind of building the bike as we ride it because this is a bureau-wide investment. We want to be doing it thoughtfully.
It sounds like this is primarily an internal investment, though, getting your internal folks prepared for their broader work around working with a more equitable community, right? At least that's what I heard from what you said.
That's, that's certainly a part of it. And I would, I would say that that's actually, you know, a priority investment for our bureau leadership is to ensure that our teams are prepared with the tools to do this work well.
Very, very good. And, and before we get to Dr. Smith, Commissioner Daly's been trying to get in. So we'll do Commissioner Daly, then we'll go to you, Dr. Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to briefly express my support for funding this item. BPS is moving forward with an anti-displacement director, directive that came out of my office. I felt very strongly about having our anti-displacement strategy in place to run alongside RIP. And for me to support RIP, it's a real compromise to move forward without that work being done. So it's, it's critical for me that it continues. It continues in a timely fashion and in a meaningful way. And I, you know, very concerned, I appreciate the displacement analysis that the bureau has done. I remain concerned that we may see displacement and that we may not see the types of housing that we are hoping for. So it's vitally important that we move forward on a strategy that will help guarantee those outcomes. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dr. Smith.
Um, yes, just really quickly, thank you, Donnie. I think that was really helpful in providing additional context for what you're thinking in terms of those funds. And the other thing I would just say is we are, O E H R is really now sort of trying to develop a model where if we have training such as RBA, which we really invested a lot of time and resource into, and as we're asking bureaus to be a part of that, but to also contribute to that, as we are not able to, you know, sort of fund that for everybody, that having this, this pool of money would be really useful. And we would want to make sure that BPS is able to be fully ingrained in those opportunities without any financial barrier. And I know sometimes that becomes an issue. So again, I'm supportive as well and appreciate the additional context, Donnie.
Dr. Smith, what was that acronym you just used?
RBA, the Results-Based Accountability Work. I think you all had.
A section, yes, yes.
Yeah, last year.
Remember the acronym.
Sorry. My apologies.
All right. So it, it sounds like there's interest in revisiting this. And it can either, you know, we can discuss it over the course of the next week. It can either be done in the context of the fall bump or we could hold it off and do it in the context of the, the next fiscal budget. So whatever people's preferences are, we can think about it.
Commissioner, excuse me, Mayor. I was just going to say, it sounds like everybody thinks that it's important that we have an equity approach in, in BPS. The question is, what will we fund with this? And what will be left unfunded, right? Because again, when we talk about equity, it's a large scope. And what I heard was different than I think what other commissioners may have heard. What I heard was this is about doing the internal work in preparation for doing the work out in the community. And that even though there may be some funds for that, it was not specifically around addressing the disparate displacement activities out in the community. So I suspect there'll be another funding package. We'll be looking at that request specifically. So I just want to be clear about the big picture around what we're doing around equity.
All right. And that, and that's great. But keep in mind, this is focused on one bureau. And there will be several asks in the upcoming budget related to equity throughout the enterprise. And so the question is, do you want to put your stake in the ground right now in the bump on planning and sustainability? Or do you want to hold off and have the broader discussion across several bureaus? And, and I, I'm certainly open to the, the will of the majority on this one. It's good either way. Commissioner Fritz had a question.
I just had a comment. I think it should be discussed in the context of the budget rather than the bump. That there are, you know, it's been mentioned several times. There is, there are various requests to do good things. And I appreciate the support for centering equity and trying to avoid displacement after the code changes. And I think it should be done in the bump because if we, I mean, in the, in the budget, because $146,000 and some of the other requests, that's a lot of money. And if we fund this, then it means we can't fund something else. So I look forward to the mayor's budget, proposed budget.
All right. We can hash that out over the course of the next week. Thank you. Donnie, anything else?
Just wanted to kind of get back on the age-friendly, if you don't mind, Mayor.
Yeah.
On Commissioner Hardesty's questions.
Yeah.
Commissioner Hardesty, you are accurate that, that this was a policy request on one time last year to essentially set up a pilot of what an age-friendly program would look like. The expectation was that at the, at the end of this, this funding, we would have a program to present back to council for recommendations on next steps. Because of the hiring challenge, I just want to acknowledge that the coordinator we hired for this program, Alan De La Torres, is a, is a leader in both the region and nationally on age-friendly policies. So it was the right hire. It just took us a while for him to get on board. So we have spent that initial $100K on, on his salary and then the services needed for him to do that outreach. And to put the COVID-19 response, he has pivoted to supporting the citywide and actually frankly, the metro's region, regional support on age-friendly and community engagement. So he is really a resource for us. And we'd like to see this resource continued so we can complete the intention of the original one-time ask, which was to stand up a pilot to, you know, report back to you all for next steps. With no expectation that, that this is an ongoing program until we get guidance from the council.
Thanks, Donnie. Appreciate it. All right. That's all the questions we have at this moment. Jessica, back to you.
Great. Okay. So we are, we have a few more carryover requests here to talk about. The next one is within special appropriations. This is the funding for, for the Columbia River Levees, the agreement that we've made with a, a group of jurisdictions that are supporting a loan to cover costs related to shoring up our, our Columbia. our Columbia River Levy system. So this carryover represents funding that has been set aside, that's required to meet the terms of that agreement and the loan. The Prosper Portland, there are two requests from Prosper Portland related to discrete projects, one of which is for the brownfield tax exemption program. This was something that was directed by council in a resolution, I think back in 2017. There was an original allocation in 2018, 19 for Prosper to come up with a tax exemption program. It's that this requires approval by Multnomah County and Portland Public Schools as it impacts their revenue streams as well. So we have not yet reached agreement with those parties. So the funding is requested to be carried over and budgeted next year so that we can continue working with those partner jurisdictions and seeing if we can complete this, this.
I've got a question, Jessica. So is there any chance that Multnomah County and the school district will agree to give up these taxes so that we can give this benefit to people on brownfields? We've been trying to do this since 2017. Should we just call this a failed program and just stop it in its tracks?
So that's an excellent question. I will relay that question to the program managers. I haven't been part of the discussions with our partners, so I'm not sure how close we are to agreement, but I will relay that question and get an answer for you, Commissioner.
Thank you. And my next question is where you're going next, which is to the Albina Vision carryover. I continue to ask, whose vision is this? Why is government funding it? And what's going to be the, what are the expectations that we're setting up for government to fund a community planning, visioning process? And then for the community to come back with us?
Mm-hmm.
And based on everything I've heard from talking with Prosper, there's still no vision, but there's government money that's supposed to help develop a vision? And how's that going to work? I don't think that we have had a full understanding of how the metro's 250,000 and our 150,000, what are they buying and what expectations are they setting up? I'm very concerned that we are once again setting community members up for failure because we're pretending we're going to do something that we may or may not do.
Thank you for those questions. I will relay those to the bureau. I don't have an answer for you, but I will pass those questions along. What I do know about the Albina Vision item is that Prosper has, has a contract that's been authorized, but that they do not anticipate spending in the current year. But I don't know the level of detail on, on sort of the, the program and where it's at and the community involvement and all of that.
I also asked Prosper to share that contract because what are we contracting for? Again, it's like, this is a vision that doesn't exist, but we're somehow acting like this is a vision that we're implementing, and it doesn't exist even today. And so I'm concerned that we're setting community members up for failure once again. Governments are funding the development of a vision that is supposed to be a community vision without the community being a part of it, except for five people.
I will forward those questions along to you, Commissioner, and we'll get them to you as soon as possible. So that completes the program carryover requests. As mentioned, there were $7.4 million in total requests currently included in the mayor's proposed is about $5.9 million of those requests. Then the next section are returns to the general fund. So there are a series of adjustments that return some discretionary resource to our contingency accounts. The first several are related to fuel station debt service. So as part of our citywide fuel station plan, we had planned on taking out some debt to, to address critical needs related to our fuel stations. However, that, that debt has not been authorized yet. Facilities is working on the plan. And so due to lower than budgeted debt service, we're recognizing general fund savings and we're actually pulling back. I believe it's over, the total is over $500,000 in, in fuel station debt service. So that's coming back to the general fund, and that will support our funding gap for next year. All of these, right until the Portland Police Bureau's item is related to the fuel station debt service. The next item is the returned cash transfer to the general fund. This is the $2 million I referred to earlier. This was planned by the police bureau. They had been planning on utilizing this funding to support the future replacement costs of their records management system, also known as region. They already have $2 million saved for that, for that request. And this money will be allocated, will be taken in the mayor's proposed supplemental budget and used to buy down the funding gap for next year and reduce the need for, for additional cuts in next year's budget.
And I'm sorry, are you talking overall budget or a police bureau budget specifically?
Overall budget.
Thank you.
So the Portland Housing Bureau had funding in the current year for a public information officer. That position had not been hired due to hiring delays, and so the mayor has decided to grab back that resource also to help close the funding gap and not proceed with the hiring of that position, but instead use that funds to help support our funding gap. Similarly, the Office for Community and Technology had also budgeted funds to, to move locations, and it looks like they will not be realizing that move this current fiscal year. So there are savings that can be grabbed back, and the mayor is, is doing so to, again, help close the funding gap. And then finally, we have updated current year projections from the Office of Accountable Elections related to the needed resources to fund their program through the end of this fiscal year. And they have, with their commissioner in charge, identified $750,000 that can be returned to the general fund in the current year, again, to support our funding gap needs.
If I could just comment on that, that was the extra $750,000 council appropriated for the special election. It turns out that that money is not needed, and so the entirety is, is being returned to the general fund as promised.
Well done, Commissioner Fritz.
Well, well done, Director Susan Motte and the programmer and the participants in the program as well. I'm extremely excited about how well it's going.
All right. So in total, that returns $3.7 million to the general fund that will be used to help close our funding gap for next year. And then finally, we have a series of other adjustments. These are largely technical in nature. Office of the City Attorney, if you'll recall, we had set aside funding last, at the beginning of this fiscal year, to support claims related to a water main break. A portion of the resources, about $133,000 in claims have been settled, and that was paid out in the fall bump. And then, since then, the bureau has settled an additional $6,078. So this is the remainder of the fund that's required for all of the settlement claims. So the remaining balance, which is about, I think about $110,000, will go back to the general fund and help solve for our funding gap for next year.
And Jessica, before you move to the next one, Donnie, I just want to make sure your, your hand is accidentally raised, that you're not trying to get it on a point here.
That was from earlier. I will un, unraise. Sorry.
Thanks, Donnie. No worries. Thank you. Sorry, Jessica. Go ahead.
That's fine. So the next item, it's a, it's a technical adjustment to a loan for prepaying debt service on the limited tax housing revenue bond. So you'll require, you'll recall, a couple of months ago, we refinanced our tax housing revenue bond, saving some money. And as part of that action, we had the Transportation Operating Fund as a backer of that loan. And so this is just a, a technical adjustment that reflects, reflects the, the prepaying of this debt service. And, and again, some savings are being realized from, from that action, which you don't see in this number here, but this is a technical adjustment. The next item is for, again, a technical adjustment reflecting revised debt service payment schedule for the Infrastructure Finance Authority levy loan. This is related to the Columbia River Levy loan that, that we talked about with the carryover earlier in the carryover section. The next item, although it is in this other adjustments category, this is actual real revenue and new money that we are going to be utilizing to help close our funding balance. This was money that was sitting in, in an accounting fund. There are a handful of funds that exist outside of our budgeting system, and it's a fund balance that predates our SAP accounting system. And so the accounting bureau, like, recognized this, this resource, saw this resource was available for budgeting, and has notified us that we can budget this resource as, as general fund contingency as they close out these old funds that, again, predate our, our current accounting system. So that's an additional $2.4 million that will help us close our funding gap. Let's see. The next item is, it says general reserve fund trip, but it's actually related to that police bureau transfer. They had originally planned on transferring funding into an account that is actually housed within our general reserve to fund their region replacement. So this is just the other side of that transaction where that money will be instead grabbed back to solve for our funding gap. Portland Fire and Rescue is transferring boathouse funds from their operating fund to their capital fund. This is also related to a council item that you all have been considering where they're applying for a federal grant to help support the construction of a boathouse. And so this is just holding those, those resources in their capital fund so that they're available if they get those, that, that federal grant, they get their, that money will be available for them to support the, the construction of that boathouse. This, the next one is a request that the bureau has made to transfer savings to their fire apparatus reserve. This, in good financial times, is, is a best practice to, to set aside money for future known equipment needs. However, given the current financial situation, the mayor has not included it, instead letting that money fall to balance to support our, our funding gap. All right. The next item is a series of technical adjustments from the Housing Bureau, and I'm looking for my notes here. Okay, so it's for to the housing in, transfers from the Housing Investment Fund for the risk mitigation pool for claims to be paid out of supporting, supporting housing units. This adjusts the budget to just match, match the contract amendment that council has already approved. And then finally, the last item is the small $2,600 item. In 2003, voters approved a five-year temporary tax levy for Portland Parks and Recreation. The bulk of the funds have been expended on eligible items, and so this is the small amount that's left in the fund. The remainder is to be transferred to the general fund per levy requirements, allowing the fund to be closed. All right. So that is all of the general fund items that I have. Are there any other questions on any of those items before I move to the last few things to talk about today?
I don't see any, Jessica.
Great. Okay. So then briefly, we, we always highlight, we spend most of our time talking about the general fund discretionary changes, but there are a number of changes happening throughout, throughout the city and throughout the fund. So we always want to be sure to touch on any notable changes so you're aware that happen are outside of the, the general fund. So there's a couple of items that we would highlight for you. The Bureau of Environmental Services is transferring $50 million from the sewer system rate stabilization fund in order to cash finance capital projects. They're transferring additional $9 million from the fund, plus another $6.5 million to contingency to compensate for lower-than-expected system development charge collections that pay for existing debt and to cover possible ratepayer revenue losses from COVID-19. In addition, the bureau is drawing $1 million from its compensation, its own compensation set aside, not our general fund compensation set aside, to prevent over-expending on their personnel services. Then the Bureau of Transportation is drawing 1.75 million on its contingency and reducing its capital outlay costs by 11.8 million based on anticipated project delays. The fund projections demonstrate significant impacts to their revenue sources, as I believe you're aware, as a result of COVID-19. The total impact will depend on the length of time of the lockdown and, I'm sorry, the length of time that the lockdown order remains in effect and how quickly the economy recovers from the crisis. So we've talked about this a little bit in our forecast briefing. The Portland Housing Bureau is recognizing $1.2 million in beginning fund balance and allocating $180,974 in contingency for costs related to the headwaters apartment complex roof failure. So they're fixing the roof. The bureau is also allocating $1 million for debt issuance costs for the Portland Affordable Housing Bond and $1.5 million in tax increment financing resources to true-up cost for loan to the DePaul Treatment Center. As is customary in the spring bump, the bureau is adjusting multi-year affordable housing projects and carrying over resources from the homeownership program, which will result, result in a net carryover of $12 million. You don't see this in the general fund tracker because this is existing in, outside of the general fund in their, their housing project and their bond funds and their other, other resources. The bureau does not anticipate significant current year impacts to revenues or expenditures due to COVID-19. So I should say, I know I'm, I'm talking a lot, and it's, it's probably hard to follow along without the information in front of you. In the filing documents, and in the document, we'll, we'll share those with you after the presentation today, there will be, there's exhibit one has a summary of everything and has all of this language. So if you'd like to review exhibit one of the, the filing documents, that summarizes all these changes, if you want to refer to it at a later time.
Thank you, Jessica. You were reading my mind.
All right. So then the Portland Parks and Recreation is truing up capital project costs based on anticipated year-end spending. They're moving $45.7 million into contingency to be rebudgeted in 2021. This is, this is again, related to their capital projects. They don't anticipate significant current year impacts to their non-general fund resources related to COVID-19. Of course, we just talked about their general fund-related resources and that impact. However, there's also concern that system development charge revenues may decline as a result of COVID-19, which I think all of the bureaus that rely on system development charge revenues are, are concerned about that. The Portland Water Bureau is drawing about $280,000 from their contingency for costs related to two ballot measures and $170,000 from their hydropower operating fund contingency for tree trimming expenses and transmission line maintenance. There are no major concerns with the year-end projections at this point, but there's some risks that due to COVID-19, revenues from retail water sales and system development charges, as well as revenue from power sales, will fall below what the bureau has projected. That's, again, just to look at the current year issues that everybody's tracking and making adjustments to in this proposed supplemental budget. All right. So with regard to position changes, there are only two changes in the mayor's proposed supplemental budget. One is converting a limited-term position to permanent in the Parks Bureau. This is following a reorganization of the Asset and Development Division. The position previously worked on the Parks Replacement Bond and will support the development of the Park Strategic Plan and is somebody that I believe is integral to their capital planning process as well. Then the other position is the elimination of one limited-term position in, in Portland Housing Bureau. This is the position that I mentioned before was the, the information officer that was funded on a one-time basis in the current year, where hiring was delayed and that funding is being grabbed back to help support our, our funding gap for next year. All right. So the headline, what everybody, I think, is interested in is where does our contingency account stand for the general fund? So after the proposed spring supplemental budget changes, there will be a total of 30.4 million budgeted in our general fund contingency. We are going to reserve 2.1 million in unrestricted contingency for current urgent and unforeseen needs. $5.9 million of that, 30.4 million, will be budgeted for program carryover as we walked through. And so those will be for specific programs and projects that council and the bureaus have identified. And then there's a remaining balance of about 22.4 million in policy set aside, both for specific things as well as for general support of our funding gap needs for next year. So again, in line with what the mayor had said in his opening remarks, he definitely is looking for any and all resource to help fund that, that, that funding gap for next year, and a significant portion of that $22 million will go towards lessening that gap for next year. All right. I believe that is the end of the presentation. I think we definitely had some good discussion around the specific requests. Are there any other questions? Are there any other questions or items that council would like to discuss at this time?
All right. All right. I guess we are good. And does that complete our agenda for this morning then, Jessica?
It does. And so in terms of next steps, as we mentioned, the, we are completing filing documents. We will share those with you so you can see everything that I may have walked through rather quickly today. And then council will be reviewing this next Wednesday and will be able to offer amendments. Our office typically helps with the construction of any amendment items. And so just to make sure that the language is, aligns with, with requirements for, from a budget law standpoint. And we're happy to, to help assist in any additional information that any member of council would like to have before that, before that hearing and also help construct any amendments that council would like to have considered next Wednesday.
Good. Well done. Excellent presentation.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Bye.
Bye.